Yep.
Good morning. If I get everybody's attention, Mr. Parker, y'all through talking? Yep. I'd like to call, welcome everybody to the April third Planning Commission meeting. And I'd like to call this meeting order and ask Mr. Slade, you say a prayer.
Let's pray. Lord God, this is the day that you may help us to be glad, to rejoice. Help us, Father, to understand that it's a privilege for us to come together, conduct the business of the county. Father, it's a privilege to be able to participate in our government. I thank you, Lord, that this privilege has been won at such a high price, Lord, by those who have fought to preserve the freedoms that we enjoy. I pray that we would be found worthy of the sacrifices that have been made so that we can do what we're doing here today. I lift up these men to you, Lord. I ask that you would give them what they need today, the wisdom and the discernment that they need to make good decisions. All of this, we pray in Christ's name.
Amen.
I get approval of the February twenty seventh minutes?
Motion.
Say. Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Old business. Have any old business?
No.
No old business? Alright. Yep.
Alright, under our first, our first item for new considerations is Daniel and Rebecca Harris. They are seeking a conditional use permit to establish a small outdoor event venue at eighteen sixteen White Road. Their proposal involves two parcels, two point four four acres where their home and event activities will be centered, and an adjoining fifteen point seven one acres designated for event space and parking. The property is zoned A1. Mr. and Mrs. Harris aim to provide a versatile and inviting space for celebrations, such as weddings, parties, and gatherings. Their proposed service will cater to a range of client needs while utilizing the expansive outdoor area to ensure the ample space for guests and parking. Their proposed venue is intended to offer a variety of services, including photography settings, basic venue site accommodations, serving ware provisions, decor, and floral arrangements. And this is a view of the entrance of the property here. And these are surrounding properties.
Have you had any phone calls or anything?
No phone calls. No issues.
I know we met with them. I rode out there and looked at the property. I haven't received any phone calls or anything, so.
So far, so good.
Okay, alright.
Alright, our next item is Janice O'Neil. She is seeking a conditional use to permit, a conditional use permit to place a twenty twenty five twenty eight by fifty six manufactured home behind an existing residence located at one seventeen Little Woods Road. This is a five acre parcel that is zoned RE one. RE one zone permits manufactured homes as a temporary or emergency hardship. And this is an aerial view of the property. Mrs. O'Neil's husband is a seventy six year old veteran and has been experiencing rapidly declining health. Due to her full-time employment, she is seeking to have her grandson and his family reside in the proposed manufactured home to provide care and support for her husband. This is her proposed site plan showing where the home will sit behind the existing home. And this is a view of the property. And these are surrounding properties.
Brian, would you go back and show me the subject property?
Let's see. That's their, their home there.
Okay, and they're gonna put it behind that?
It's gonna be directly.
It's gonna be well off the road, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Well off the road. And I don't think you're gonna be able to see too much of the manufactured home when they set it up.
Yep.
Okay.
Looks like it's a little bit bigger than the house.
Yeah.
Going on the draw.
Brian, how do, how do we normally handle a hardship situation, just as an equivalent?
As soon as the hardship is over, the manufactured home will be removed. And she does understand that. Ms. O'Neil, she, she said, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. If anything changes, we will have the manufactured home removed as soon as possible. The next item we have is the Rankin County, Rankin County is initiating a five foot dimensional variance request for an existing structure located at two twenty four Avalon Circle. The property is zoned C two. This is an aerial view of the property. A recent survey of the property revealed that the structure encroaches five feet into the required side setback line. To resolve the issue, the county is pursuing a county initiated variance request to accommodate the encroachment. And then we got some surrounding properties here.
That's all we got.
Okay. Alright. Good. Our next item is Corey Sanders is requesting to rezone a five point eight one acre parcel located on Stoll Road from A one to C two. Mr. Sanders is seeking this rezoning to align the zoning designation with his adjoining C two property for the intended development of future office spaces. This is an aerial, aerial view of the property. This is a map of the zoning of the surrounding properties. The red is the C two, white is the ag, and gray is industrial. There's a small piece on that corner of industrial. And this is a view of the property from Stoll. And surrounding properties. Alright, the last item under new considerations, we have Seth Bilbro seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres of a hundred and sixty acres on Stump Ridge Road. The property is zoned A one, which allows mining through a conditional use permit. And this is an aerial view of the property. And this is a picture taken of the property. Mr. Bilbro is proposing to enter and exit the property off of Stump Ridge Road. We have received his four acre notice of exemption form from M D E Q. And these are surrounding properties. This time we need to set public hearings. Alright.
Set them all at once, correct?
We've got one, two, and three that can be set at one time and then four and five, or separate motion.
I'll make a motion to set one, two, and three.
Second.
Scott made a motion, set one, two, and three. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
I make a motion setting four and five at the same time.
Say. Steve made a motion. Set four and five for April fifteenth. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any nuisance property?
No nuisance.
No nuisance.
None today. We have been working very hard. Kobe has done a great job. He's been working really hard on this.
Well, that's good. I think this is the first.
Kobe, did you send me a list of ones that we got in the future?
Yes, sir.
Today is gonna be, I've got two or three meetings after this one, but I'd like you to sit down with me and let's look at them. I don't know if we can get it done this week because tomorrow's Friday. Okay, thank you.
Our next meeting will be May the first. Get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
They made a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Now I'd like to call, order the board meeting. Public comments. Have any public comments? Mr. Slade?
Yes, sir. Gentlemen. We have been provided through the Mississippi Association of Supervisors with a form resolution that is being circulated to all members of the Association of Supervisors, all member counties of the Association, requesting that each governing authority, each Board of Supervisors consider executing a resolution to support the maintenance of what is currently the law that municipal bonds or county issued government bonds, general obligation bonds shall remain tax-free investments for federal income tax purposes. There is a, an effort that is underway at the federal level to remove the federal tax exemption for any government issued purpose bond. And that will meaningfully impact, meaningfully impact the cost associated with any issuance of debt that is incurred by municipalities and counties. Because there would be the removal of that tax-free status, the cost of issuance will necessarily go up. And so the Association of Supervisors is encouraging all of our county Boards of Supervisors to indicate very clearly that we would like for that privilege, that tax-free investment, to remain so that we can count on the same kind of debt service calculations that we have grown accustomed to for years. So it's critical that we maintain that. I would ask for a motion to authorize the execution of the resolution that's been provided and for us to circulate that resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
A copy of that resolution is in your packet, so if you want to read through that, you can see what is being executed. Item B under my section is authority for the Board President to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Pine Lands LLC. This will be for the county to acquire parcels thirty five and thirty six of a subdivision, commercial subdivision development that is being planned. And this will provide an opportunity for the county to provide for facilities that are necessary for county government under Mississippi Code Section nineteen seven one, subparagraph one. Just need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
I have with me today Mr. James Hall from Engineering Service who wants to come forward, at least, well, he might, he doesn't want to. Let me rephrase that. Who has been asked to come forward and to address the board concerning the board's inquiry about remediation work that can be done for certain county properties. These are properties that the county controls. And we've got some structures on those properties that need to be addressed, and so Mr. Hall has some information that he's gonna share.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Slade? I hoped I would have more than I do today, but I will explain a little bit of where, where we are with this. We, we're looking at two properties, one in Florence and one out on Marquette. And for the one on Marquette, there are some particular details related to asbestos containing materials. So there's a special kind of type of demolition that has to be done there. And for both of these jobs, they are so particularly specialized that the pool of available candidates, at least locally for sure, is not very large. There's not a lot of guys that do this kind of work. And beyond that, this is not the kind of job where you want to get halfway into it and realize your contractor's hand over its head. So you want, you want to deal with somebody who you know can handle the work. So with that said, I've reached out to the group who had prepared estimates for us several years back, five, six years back. And in an attempt to get those numbers updated, I was assured that they would have those numbers for us today. They, they did not have those numbers for us today. So I have gone to some Plan B. I've got a couple of other guys. Some of them are from, are from out of state and would not be my first preference, but when they get, maybe we'll get a better price. But I, I, I put that request out to some other entities now. I should have some, some good numbers for you here in the next few days. I just apologize. I don't have them this morning. So I can discuss some of the previous numbers and, and kind of how that might relate to currently, if you'd like, or we could just wait until.
We've got two new board members who've not heard anything about any.
Okay, so, so the, the, the project, the site there on Marquette consists of the former Marquette cement plant. So the large building that we've all seen. And the green siding that you see on it is asbestos containing sheeting. So a significant portion of that, of that building is clad in asbestos containing material. Now, it's not going anywhere. It's, 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 it's not what they call friable. So it's not, it's not a threat in its current condition to, to the community at this point. But it does present some, some special requirements when you go to demolish, to demolish the building. So we had looked at that and prepared numbers for that to demolish that entire building to the ground and abate the asbestos and remove the asbestos in that process. And that number was one point five million was the estimate. Now, that doesn't involve eggs or products from Canada. So maybe that number hasn't changed a lot, but I would, I would not anticipate that it is the same.
Possible it could have went down, huh?
Yeah, it, it actually is, but I, I would be surprised. And, and you know, and these, bear in mind, these are planning level estimates. These are not detailed bids where they've itemized each cost. These are, these are kind of ballpark numbers just to get an idea for kind of planning and budgeting purposes. So that, that's as far as we're taking it at this point.
Add fifty percent. So we have to bid this out?
Yes, sir. It will be a bid project.
Absolutely.
Which is part of the trouble in getting estimates is I'm asking these guys to give me a free estimate for where they're gonna have to competitively bid for, so it's no, no real advantage to them to, to help us on that, but.
Yep, yep, yep. We can, we can stand up a bid project without getting an estimate if y'all prefer to do it that way. I just felt like you needed to know what you were getting into here on the front end. I, I think you're looking at a two and a half million dollar project on that building to get it on the ground. That's just where I think the price is going to be. I, I don't look for it to, Brad. I really don't.
Is that how we go ahead?
Get it on the ground? Is that the removal also?
That's to completely eliminate the structure and to clean the site.
Okay.
You're looking at, I think, two and a half million on that site.
I'd say we go ahead and just do the bid process and.
See what we got.
Right. Well, speed it up instead of keep dragging it on, you know? If we're planning on doing this, I think we're all in agreeance of, you know, cleaning up.
And it could, yeah, it's an eyesore.
Right.
And it could be a valuable spot for something that the county wants to do.
And that'd probably make it easier on your end, you know, get versus getting estimates and.
However y'all want to do it.
We do one, might as well do two, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you know.
Could get better pricing if we.
Right, if you do two together, sometimes you get a little bit better pricing.
See, and how big, how large is the real estate, the, the land in your district that we're talking about where the battery plant was?
It's not very large. It's what, five, five to seven acres total?
Yeah, at, at, at most. It's, it's a city lot there.
Right. Lot of it's concrete, you know?
The building itself actually, actually is incorporates the vast majority of the property. That's, the building itself is that large.
It seems like that we have to clean up the ground also. Is that not right?
Absolutely not.
No leaching?
Absolutely not. What we're, what we're embarking to do here is to not disturb the surface at all. In fact, it will be clear when we stand up this bid project as it relates to Florence that, that this is removal of everything above the ground and no disturbance of anything underground.
There is, there is, on the other side of forty nine. Battery plant had two locations over there. One of those is a ground fill location that, you know, that has leached in the ground.
The county doesn't own that property.
That's correct.
That's, that's owned by the former battery plant operator and, and by the bankruptcy trustee.
Okay.
So that's, we're only talking about the county's property that was under lease.
I was confused. The, the, these two properties, EPA has conducted some, some soil and groundwater investigation on both of these sites and found nothing of concern that, that had to be acted on. So our, our presumption is based on that, that we're not, we're not looking at a ground and soil water remediation project. We're just looking at demolition and, and, and site cleanup without, without any environmental component.
So there was some monitoring of ground out there at Marquette?
There, there is, yes, sir. And, and it was associated with the historic quarry and, and operation of that facility. But on, on this property in particular, there, there's, there's nothing, nothing of that sort. It's, it's on separate property on down the road.
So you're saying if we get this cleaned up, removed, something else could be put on this site or it could be marketed to?
Yes, sir.
There will be conflicts if it was sold and they come in to a soil sample or whatever.
Right, so to the best of our knowledge at this point, based on what we know, there's no reason to suspect there will be any issues with development of this site for, for whatever purposes. It should be, it should be good to go.
I wonder, Greg, to go ahead and authorize for them to put out bids. What do we need to do?
We're gonna, right now, I wasn't anticipating that we might get into, y'all have any other questions of James before I, before he runs off, because I don't think we're gonna get him back up here if he gets away. Alright. Mr. President, I would ask that we, just out of an abundance of caution, that we entertain a motion to add an action item for item C, add an action item for that. So I just need a motion to add, so that you guys can act.
I make a motion to add an action item for item C.
I second it. Brad made a motion. I second the motion to add an item for C. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Let me see if I, I have read the conversation accurately here. What I would suggest is that the action item be authority to publish a notice for bids for two properties, one being the Marquette Road Site and the other being the downtown Florence site. Those would be bid projects that would call for bids entertaining contractors, qualified contractors, who can remove the structures from both of those sites in accordance with federal and state law, and to do so at an acceptable price within a certain timeframe. That's what I'm looking for. Did I get that right? We're gonna go ahead and do that for two sites?
I make a motion.
Second.
I made a motion. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Just for the record and for the public, this board has not authorized anything to happen. It's only authorized the receipt of bids so that the board can then consider whether or not there will be action. Just want to make that clear.
Correct.
Very good. Mr. President, though, that concludes my section of today's work session agenda. I have a number of matters that will need to be discussed in executive session, so I apologize now. We've got friends who'll be here shortly, if they're not already here, that, that will assist us with several matters in executive session today. We're gonna move as fast as we can.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hicks, would you like to step on up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Item A is approval to accept DEQ grant. This is on our local government solid waste assistance program. We received an amount of thirty three thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars seventy one cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item B is our board attorney and our E S C director have put together a bid notice. And this is on our outdoor inclement weather warning siren system. So we're ready to publish that if the board is ready to move forward.
Motion to.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
One item of additional business, and if y'all pardon me for just a moment, Mr. Harrison had additional business. I don't know what it was.
I think we got some, some cuttings, some trees. Dwayne, you wanna come on up? Mr. Jones, will you come up to the mic, please?
Mike picked it up and believed it.
Right. Can you give us an update on the, on the trees and where we're at?
Well, where you wanna start? We are.
Just, I guess, give us a number on, like, the number of trees that's been taken down so far since we started this.
Since we started last April, we've taken down about three thousand, give or take, trees.
In our county right of.
And we are approximately, I don't know, between us, power companies that are cutting down the trees, we're probably forty percent coverage. Still got a long way to go. Some of the roads that we've cut back April, May last year, you go back down them now and, you know, dead trees are back.
Additional dead trees.
More trees have died.
And we seeing that on all the roads we go down.
As far as the, I guess, what was budgeted so far this year, you getting close to the end or?
I am.
Yeah, we're, we're down to about a hundred and fifty thousand right now, Brad, out of what we've done. Like what we'd like to ask for is another million to get us to budgeted down. Don't know if it's gonna get us through, but.
Is it any way possible that we could bring on more than just one crew?
We can bring on as many crews as we need to bring on.
But I'm just saying, we get to a certain point, let's say if we get, drop below, get below four hundred thousand, we could drop back to one crew or something like that.
We've, we've actually talked to three cutters. We could put on more crews, cover some more ground on that side of it.
Would that have to be rebidded out again or?
We, I think we have a, a standing contract. I don't know what the deadlines are on our standing agreement that we have in place right now. It, it, again, I'm gonna have to look back at what we did. What we may have done is, is some type of arrangement that allow for us to continue.
It, it don't have a date.
Until the board stops it? I, I, I don't remember. So I apologize for that.
Didn't have a date on it.
Okay. Well, what we can do, just out of an abundance of caution, is just simply have you guys renew that authorization and then we can work with appropriate contractors to carry out that work that you've approved. So if y'all want to just stand up an item that's kind of protective that says extend the existing arrangement that we have to clear dead fall, we can do it that way. I'll just be able to y'all.
We can make that last.
So we just gonna take it out of road fund? So what are we gonna pay for the buildings out of?
Reclaiming of, reclaiming. Reclaiming of, reclaiming of.
Yeah, so, gentlemen, let me throw this in while y'all are talking about it, because it is germane. Uh, we were in DC, Scott, uh, was with us in DC last week. Uh, we reminded Senator Hyde Smith staffer, uh, that we were very appreciative of her, uh, really it was her idea. She brought to us the idea of, uh, requesting a specific appropriation for Rankin County under what is called a pre-disaster mitigation grant. She, she actually earmarked an appropriation request for us in one of their authorization and appropriation bills. That died when they passed the continuing resolution as opposed to adopting a budget. That was a FY twenty-five request that was made on behalf of Rankin County by Senator Hyde Smith. That request, that appropriation was in the neighborhood of six and a half to seven million dollars. That would have gone a long way to help in Rankin County be able to address the dead fall that we've got on county right of way. And she recognized that we need that help and she did what she could to try to help us and we are appreciative of that. We asked the staffer to help us revisit that issue for FY twenty-six. If, if we get our way, if, uh, if she's still willing to help us with that, and I know that she is, then we could see something, if they can get their act together up there, we could potentially see something shake out by this fall on an actual budget item with an appropriations. We're still asking.
This continuing resolution is through September, is that right?
I, I, I understood it to be through the end of the year, Steve, but I could be wrong about that. At, at any rate, we, what we've been told is that they are working to try to get something official to happen by October. That's the timeframe that we've been led to believe is on the table as far as, but, but this is DC and who knows? So I, my point is this, uh, wha- whatever you decide to do to address this in this interim phase, your team is working feverishly to try to find us some federal assistance to get this.
Ask you this. If we're able to get the assistance, is it where we can go back and recoup monies that we have spent with good documentation?
Unlikely, but we will inquire.
So there's no reason for us to mask the pedal, uh.
It's, it's unlikely, but, but we can inquire. And it could be, Steve, that, that, that the appropriation itself could be structured, the language could be structured so that it has some sort of retroactive effect that I will just have to inquire and see if that's, if, can, can we do it that way? So that, back to April one of twenty-five, say.
My next thoughts were the trees are dead. We gotta get to them and I would think as quickly as possible. We don't want a tree to fall on a car and somebody lose their life, uh, and we don't want them on the road, stuff like that. This makes me think, because I was gonna suggest if we put two crews and attack this as quickly as we could. But I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves and lose six million dollars. Uh, it's kind of a catch-all because to me it's a safety issue with these dead trees in the right way.
And, and what we're seeing, Mr. Gaines, is, I, I don't know what's going on with the trees, but we've noticed here in the last few weeks that, I mean, we're just attacking the dead ones right now, but there's gonna be a tremendous amount come behind this. We're seeing trees right now that's starting to shed their needles, uh.
Even hardwoods.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be worse than what we're dealing with right now, I think in the near future.
You know, and I'm not a entomologist.
No, neither.
You know, we initially blame it on the drought and I think the drought did weaken the trees. But for some reason, these bugs are so much more active in our area. I mean, I, I've seen trees that stood in water almost and very wet ground, hardwoods that shouldn't have been affected by the drought and now are dying. And, uh, and I'm talking about a hundred and fifty year old trees.
Supposedly what I, what I've read up on this, you know, the fungus in the drought deal got into the oak trees. It's, uh, some kind of fungus that got into the hardwoods and causing that. And they said it would be a three or four year reaction on the hardwoods. And then the beetles, the drought kinda started that and then the beetles kinda stepped up their game after the drought. And I think what we're seeing right now is a beetle tree starting to come, come alive. I was on the road the other day and I'm gonna say a mile of that road, the bottom twenty foot of the trees are already done shedding needles on the vines. And you can see the brown starting to inch up the greenness of the tree, you know, so I mean.
Well, I just.
I don't know what we're gonna get into next year.
Well, it's, it's still gonna be some more out there in, in the next two years, you know, I believe to, you know, to address. And, uh, I'm like, uh, Steve, regardless for the safety, I mean, we need to get two crews and do all that we can do to address this issue. You know, it's not something that we take lightly, but you know, it, it's gotta be addressed and we don't really have a choice.
It, this, you know, resembles a disaster. I mean, from one end of the county to the other, uh, and it's so widespread that.
Well, that's, that's the thing, it's all over.
We need federal help.
Oh, there's no question. I, I'm just not comfortable telling you guys, yeah, go ahead, we'll, we'll backfill once we get the appropriation.
I understand.
But, I, I don't know that we can.
But I mean, it's still gonna be trees a year from now.
Oh, no question. Pursuing the, the federal assistance is, to me, is a given. Uh, you guys obviously will make the decision about that. But, uh, the way that, the way that the request was made, there was no, there, there didn't appear to be any match requirement, but I am anticipating that there will be a match requirement, I, I mentioned that. But, uh, but, uh, generally those match requirements, uh, like this are gonna be in the neighborhood of about twenty-five percent local match. So I anticipate us having a local match responsibility of twenty-five percent. On a, on a six million dollar appropriation, that means it's gonna be an eight million dollar project. Uh, that's what it means roughly.
Could we use?
Seven and a half.
If we did give that million that we spoke of earlier, could that be used as part of that match?
Probably not, and that's because, uh, it, this is FEMA uh, and the match responsibility is gonna fall under FEMA's guidelines and typically in-kind matches like that, cause that's what that would be, that would be county service. Typically in-kind matches start from the date that the application is granted. Uh, it, I don't think we can take what we have done in the past and bring that forward as meeting our match responsibility. Just full disclosure, I, it, it may be that the language is such that they do give us credit for that and that'll be a nice win for us if that happens, but I, I don't want you guys counting on that.
The good, the good thing is we're keeping up with good documentation on this, Mr. Berry. We're getting deviations of the trees, we've got the address where we cut the trees. So if somebody had to come back and audit this process to match what we did, you know, what Craig's talking about, we do have that documentation to pull back off. And that's what Dwayne's out there doing is keeping track of all this stuff we can.
I guess the main thing is, are we, is everybody in agreeance with putting some more money in that fund?
Can you tell us where we could?
And I think that, I think that money will get us to where we've got an idea of what we dealing with, what we're seeing out there right now. So, uh, I think it'll buy us enough time to see if this is just some weather changing reaction or where we gonna be at.
Where do you think we can, or may?
Based on your future options that you're looking at, uh, the road budget has the funds to cover it. But your options are the general county budget or road department, either one.
Have, have we, did we ever, uh, finish out, uh, the discussion about your request to help with some races on the second half of a discussion we talked about?
We have that, we have that later on the first night.
Okay. So there is funds available for that and a million for the trees?
Within the current budget.
And his?
No, we got within current budget.
No, it's, it's not a budgeted item, this will be in addition to the budget through the cash reserves.
But you said we have that in the road department?
Yes.
Right now.
That's, that's what I'm asking, in the road department's budget, is, would it cover a million for trees?
No, not in the current budget.
Okay.
We have the money in the bank though.
Yeah, but he, I, the, the right, the other part I do, the other part I do have.
The raise.
Okay. So he does not have in his budget funds that he could use for a million extra dollars?
Not an extra, we didn't budget the extra million dollars.
What were you referring to when you said, yes, Mike has it in his budget?
In his road fund.
So there's a million dollars in his road fund right now to cover?
In my savings.
Yeah, in the, in the cash reserves.
We'll have to move that money from either my, my reserve or the general reserve.
There's a budget and then there's a fund.
I understand now.
We would just make a budget amendment to increase his budget to cover the extra million dollars. And you decide whether you wanna pull that out of the road fund or the general fund.
Right, so it can come out of the road fund or the general fund?
Either one.
I, I would rather take it out of general because what we're gonna do is come back and be trying to backfill.
The road fund.
Road fund. And might as well handle it one time.
All right, so I make a motion to.
Add.
To add.
They can just do the budget amendment.
Under additional business.
Take a million out of?
We're gonna take a million out of the road department, the general, the general funds.
Think what you're doing is you're authorizing an increase in the road department budget to account for additional dead fall clearing activity and you're gonna fund that budget amendment from the general fund. That would be your motion. And I'll stick, that, that's to add, that's to add.
I made a motion to add and Brad seconded a motion, any further discussion?
One correction on that, it's not gonna increase the road, it's gonna increase the board, cause we'll pay it out of the board since it's coming out of the general.
Okay. All in favor? Now we made a motion to add it, now we need a motion, I make a motion.
Yes.
To what?
To approve. Brad seconded a motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you guys, we're, just started on this quickly.
Two crews?
Yes, sir.
Two crews, yeah. I have a.
Any additional business under the?
I think that was all the additional business.
We do have a need for executive session and I'm happy to give you guys the bases for that if y'all wanna entertain those. All right, we're gonna be talking about, uh, potential acquisition of, of county properties. Uh, we're gonna discuss personnel matters, we're gonna talk about the disposition of county owned property. Uh, we're gonna tw- times two, uh, and then we've got litigation.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the needs that Craig just discussed.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded a motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Now?
Now we.
Make a motion to, uh, go into executive session.
Second.
Steve made a motion, go into executive session, Scott seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.